Good evening. The time is 6:30, and I would like to call this regular session of Chardon City Council order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amy, please call the roll.
Mr. Blackley?
Here.
Mrs. Chuha?
Here.
Mr. Graff?
Here.
Mr. LaCo?
Here.
Ms. Means?
Here.
Mr. Molesky?
Here.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Approval of Minutes. We'll do this in two different sections here, but is there, are there any additions or corrections to the March 7, 2024 special session minutes? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented? So, second. And second, further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. LaCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Are there any additions or corrections to the March 14, 2024 public hearing or the March 14, 2024 regular session minutes?
I think there was one that Amy was made aware of, Don Novotny versus John Novotny. On Pages One and Five.
Very good.
So both the public hearing and the regular session.
Oh, right. Any other edits? Is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So move.
Second. Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. LaCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Jane.
I want to thank Amy for the creation of those minutes. There was, there was a slew of information, and it was all well done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, the Manager's Report. Good evening, Randy.
Good evening, everyone. Good to be here tonight. First couple items are HR-related. Brandon Kovac submitted his letter of resignation in two weeks' notice on March 25. Brandon was hired in the city November 2 of 2020 in the Division of Streets, Parks, Cemeteries as a maintenance worker. We have posted the position and advertising it, and we did not have any internal candidates, so we're moving forward with getting applicants for that. Also wanted to provide an update on the hiring process for the newly created full-time position for the full-time maintenance worker in Lands and Buildings Division. We received five applicants, and Mike, Heidi, and Paul interviewed three. They made a recommendation for my consideration, of which I had an interview today, and I'll be getting with Paul tomorrow to discuss next steps for that position. So that's moving ahead nicely. Also, just an update on the Jogga Theater rental. As you know, August, April 2, we were opening up for the rentals. Curtain 440 did come in and have rented the theater from November 17 through December 15. Now, that's the only show that we have right now being rented. Also, this is regarding IT. As I mentioned in my March City Manager Activity Report, IS Squared is working with us to migrate to Office 365. Project will transition our messaging environment from Microsoft Exchange on-premises server to Microsoft Office 365. All the councilmen will be set up with a chardon.cc email address for safety and security reasons, as we discussed when Bala was here, and you guys will be able to work with the IT team to say, here's how I want it to go. You can have it come into the chardon.cc and then go to whatever one you want it to go to, but they'll give you what to do as far as responding so that it's safe and secure and also kept for records retention purposes, which is extremely important. So those changes will be coming probably in the next month. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Vice Mayor Means, who would like to give us an update on the solar eclipse event that we had.
Thank you. So whenever we have a successful event on the square, it's usually because a lot of people participated and made it that way, and that was certainly the case. It was a really beautiful and amazing day and really fun day on the square. We had a lot of visitors in Chardon, who had some who had come to visit family, some folks who had never been in the city before, and they didn't know anybody in Chardon. They were actually just following the sun, and they, you know, Chardon originally wasn't necessarily supposed to be the sunniest of days, and it turned out to be great. So there was like a mother and son who stopped and they stayed, and it was just because he was like, we've got to go to where the best view's going to be, and they picked Chardon for that. So that was really fun. I wanted to thank the people who worked directly on this event, our city staff, Becky Rapaski and Mike Butt, of course, and City Manager Sharp, he poked his head in a couple of times on things, also to Chardon Rotary volunteers Sylvia McGee and Steve Turpin, who also helped out quite a bit in putting the event together. We want to thank the Chardon Rotary for, again, for purchasing the glasses and for handing them out on Monday. They were also helping us sell the T-shirts that we had out of the tent, so we really appreciated that. There aren't any T-shirts left. We've had several people ask us about that, but we did not. We don't have any left. I think we are, are we still, do we still have any boxes on the square for recycling the glasses? A couple people have asked about that upstairs.
I have a question.
Okay, all right. I also wanted to thank Melissa Rico from the Chardon Chamber and Maria and Lindsay Miller. They volunteered at our kids' craft, an activity station that was over at Park School, and we really appreciated that the schools were, they had, they were going to allow us to use the park auditorium if the weather was bad, but it turned out nice, so we were able to move outside. Also wanted to say thank you, because we're very grateful. We had like an in-house expert, Maria Ryback, who's a citizen. She's actually a neighbor of the city managers. She presented at the theater. Maria put a lot of time and energy into her presentation to make it interesting, but something that was understandable. And actually during the moment of totality, I was kind of wandered over near the bandstand, and I literally heard someone say, Maria said we could take our glasses off for a few minutes. So you need to tell her that. And I don't know if everyone heard, but we had a proposal on the square, too, right after the sky started to lighten. So that was very cool. They told us about it in advance, so we knew that that was coming, so we went over there for that, too. Also wanted to thank the students who participated in the student art show. All the artwork, we returned it to St. Mary's. The folks, the kiddos who won, their names are all on our Facebook page, and next week they can pick up their prizes and artwork over at Beans, and then all the remaining artwork is in, they can pick it up from Becky upstairs. And finally, I just wanted to say kind of thank you to our silent partner in all of our activities, whether it's ours or somebody else's, which is our city staff, who, you know, they get the park ready for everybody to come, and then they go help, you know, they pick it all up and clean it up for the next thing. So I wanted to say thank you to them.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to the Public Works Projects Updates. The Hidden Glen Water Main Loop, when I wrote this, I said 85%. I think it's probably closer to about 95 at this point in time, winding down, so that's a good thing. Just a couple more things to do with some valve boxes. The Maple Highlands Trail Stream and Wetlands Restoration Project, again, almost completed, and it is flowing. I drove by today and saw it in the rain, so it seems to be working well for its intended purpose, and hopefully everything will start growing out there soon. The 2024 Asphalt Resurfacing, Chardon Windsor Road from Grant Street to 608, no updates at this time. Center Street Sanitary Improvement, a pre-construction meeting was held on the 5th of this month, and work is scheduled to begin here shortly. The Seventh Avenue Repair Widening and Extension Project, actually I do have a little bit of update. The items that we've been waiting for have come in. They're just being inventoried to make sure everything is set to go. So if that's the case, then this project will start moving forward again with the installation of that turn signal as well. Sidewalk Maintenance Catch Basin Program, work is to begin mid-April, but the sidewalks, not until after the festival has come and gone intentionally, so that it's not messed up during the festival time. And then finally, the Street Maintenance Program, project will focus on resurfacing of the Hidden Glen Trail Phase One and Bentwood Drive, which I heard is a little over 15 years old at this point in time, and mill and fill sections on Wilson Mills Road and Goodrich Court. And then also our crack seal and reclemite programs will be like we normally do throughout various locations all throughout town, and this work is anticipated to start to be bid late this spring. I'd be happy to answer questions, and if I can't, I'm sure Paul or Doug could.
I do have a question not related to what you covered. I know this was a lot of brushout, and I know we're not starting the program until May, so I don't know if maybe future years we may need to, it all depends, it's kind of strange because it depends on the weather, too, but since the weather's been so nice, I know a lot of people.
It's been a strange year, for sure.
So, just with the Maple Fest coming up and everything, I know there's a lot of brushout, so I don't know what to do other than.
It's hard because we have done this program for so many years with the same, same program, same parameters. If we start changing it, well, then it's going to be permanent. It's just another, you know, series of services that people will come to expect that we'll have to add on as a continually thing. So, yeah, we're aware of that, and actually I was approached and said, no, we don't want to do something we haven't done in the past.
Okay.
Can we put a message on the board when it starts? So, that it starts in May, can we throw a message up there that just says Brush Collections Begins?
Of course. Becky does, and it's advertised in the newsletter. It's basically plastered everywhere.
Okay.
Is there anything else for Randy?
Just real quick. Randy and Paul, you may have noticed this week, the EPA is coming out, talking about regulations for getting rid of what are called forever chemicals in drinking water. Is that something you have investigated in relation to our water system? Are we affected by that regulation? We're aware that they're looking at it, but we've not been directed to do anything at this point. It seems like it's coming, so it might be proven to. Have we ever had our water system tested for this? I would have to look at the analysis off the top, and there's a number of things that it's tested for. Yeah, I'm not expecting an answer. But we can look at it and see. But I, again, it's, unless EPA has directed us, it's kind of premature to do anything because there, it's usually a work in process. Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, that with these items in the news, that people want to be turned and want to call it. It might be proven to have the information in front if it's not expensive.
Anything else for Randy? Thank you, Randy. And Heather, thanks for your overview of the eclipse. We've had many entertaining and exciting events on the square. This was completely unique, of course, and it was great cooperation between city and many organizations. And you, Kyle, and Randy should be thanked a great deal for your efforts.
About 375 years.
That's the next one?
Yeah, something. In Chardon.
Sounds like it was quite the engagement.
Yeah. That's a good one, Dan. Okay, we're going to move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Planning Commission Report. Andy?
Yes, the Planning Commission met in regular session on March 26. We had just two items on the agenda. One was a sign deviation on behalf of Ryan Holmes. This was for a sign that will be installed on the Schifler Equipment property, 475 South Street. That was approved. And the other had to do with Jake Cowie and Chip's Clubhouse. He requested architectural review. He is replacing his siding with a white siding that's on the building, the main building, with sage green siding, which will match the new metal roof that they're putting on. So then that also was approved. Steve, do you have anything else?
The siding should be going on probably in the next week or so, and the sign's already been installed by Schifler.
Big golf ball on top?
That I, that I don't know. I don't, I haven't seen the golf ball yet, but it's coming to.
If it was reported previously, but there's a, he's installing a tee with a large golf ball on the roof as well. I can't issue approval. That concludes my report. Steve, you got an economic to go?
Yes. Good evening. First quarter, like, like the last couple of years, has been relatively busy. We did have three new businesses open up in the first quarter. Pop Shelf at 550 Fifth Avenue. Many of you were there for the, for the ribbon cutting back in January. Walls-to-Walls Painting opened up down on Water Street, 554 Water Street. Last night, the city manager and I were able to test out Horseman's Axe Throwing over on Jerry Avenue. The board seemed to be in order and of regulations, so they should be opening this weekend. They have, I think he's at four lanes right now, but he's going to have six or seven, when, he's going to expand to six or seven. So, so we could have League Night and all those types of things. So. Some of the other projects going on right now around town, Thistle Creek, down in North Hampden, they've got 16, at this point, 16 homes are completed. Four are still under construction. I think yesterday we approved another one, and then I believe they're going to be applying for another one in the next week or so. So that, that's moving right along.
Steve, just real quick on that one. We had a meeting, a field meeting there a couple weeks ago about potentially deleting the walking trails. Anything?
Yes, they, that will be, we'll discuss actually that this evening. At some point, we will need to have council schedule a public hearing for that before the May meeting. I don't know when, when we want to do that by a motion, but yes, the request is coming in from Mr. Summers would be to not install the walking trail that was in the final development plan. Like Andy said, we had gone out and walked a portion that we could of where the trail was going to go. It's not going to be a very easy trail to install, and it, and even if it does get installed, it's going to be probably fairly difficult to maintain over the years, and, and some of the places that it's going to have to, the way it's going to have to be installed might not be, might have some safety concerns with the amount of drop-off and stuff that's going to be near the trail. So, Mr. Summers is coming in with a proposal at this point. In lieu, in lieu of installing that trail would be a monetary contribution to active recreation in the community in the amount that it would have cost to install that trail, but that has to be approved by Planning Commission and Council because it was in the final development plan. And he has applied for that. It'll be a Planning Commission at their April meeting. Ben, is this, can we make a motion to set that now, or do we have to do that?
We do now.
I talked with the Clerk of Council, 6:25 before the May 9 meeting for public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Further discussion on that? Call the question.
Mr. Graff?
Yes.
Mr. LaCo?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yeah.
Keep moving on. Redwood Apartments, if anybody's been down there, they're, Doug and I actually met with them to start talking about how they, how they're going to close out the construction portion of their project. 15, 15 of the 19 buildings have occupancy permits, and the other four are considerably close to completion. So I would, I would venture to guess that the actual construction of the units will be done probably within the next month, and then at that point, weather permitting, they'll have, they have a lot of landscaping to finish up that they couldn't do during the winter. So, but I think that by, by the beginning of summer, that project should be pretty much completely finished out. So. Maple Trace, I did the walkthrough on their model home yesterday. If anybody thought that that was rather quick, it was 45 days from the first shovel in the ground until the final plumbing walkthrough that we did for the impact fee. They, they told me they'd be done in 52 days, so as long as they put some sod down between now and next Friday, they'll meet their, meet their deadline. But they, I believe, they said they will start having, they'll actually start having staff at the model home next week to decorate it, and then it'll be open, probably taking customers either next weekend or the following Monday. So. Ohio Ordnance, if anybody's been down on Park Drive, they're moving along quite rapidly with their, their building. A lot of the, the building itself on the outside is pretty much finished. They're still finishing up on the inside. I believe that'll, they'll, they, that's probably still a couple months from being finished. Chase Bank, they're, they're moving right along, too. They put some, they put the curb in the basin for the parking lot in the last week or so. I would expect that will be done probably the next month or two also. And then obviously, the courthouse is the big one. Everybody's seen, can see that as they drive by. So they're, you know, still on target for an opening sometime in a year and a half from now. So. Royal Tree, as you're aware, got final plan approval from council a couple months ago. They're still working on the construction documents, and that's moving forward. They did, I'm sure you're all seeing that they did do the tree removal, what few trees there were on the site. Most of it was brush and a lot of dead trees. I spoke with the contractor, and he said of actual value trees, they took less than one semi truck full off of the site from what, from Phase One, what they've already cleared. So a lot of what was out there was brush and dead ash trees and that, and of that nature. Park Avenue Muse, we've had some discussions with the potential developer who might take that project over, but there's not a update further than that. And then the zoning code update, where this evening would be, is scheduled for the second reading with a third reading next month potentially. And then we can wrap that project up. With that, I can answer any questions.
Any further questions for Steve? All right. Thanks, Steve. Moving on to Council Committee Reports, we'll begin with Safety. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Safety Committee met on March 28. In attendance were Chief Geis and Chief Neas and Chief Gaspar, and the main topic of discussion was the renewal of the fire department contract, and Justin's going to give a first statement on that momentarily, so I won't cover that any further, other than to say that Debbie and I, Council Chuha, we listened to it and we, we have given our, our recommendation for approval. Related to this as well is the need to think about replacing the aerial ladder truck. Justin or Larry, were you guys, were you going to address that tonight possibly?
Yes.
We did set the, our date for our next meeting at April 24 at 3:00 PM. Then finally, under Other Businesses, Chief Neas asked us to look at the, the county's 911 plan, and as I'll let him explain here in a moment, that is on the agenda this evening for your consideration. And again, the committee is recommending approval of that resolution. Chief Neas, do you have anything else you want to say about that?
Sure. The city received a letter from, from the county. There's a, they had established a county 911 committee to oversee the 911 operation within Jogga County. That committee's in place to review the PSAP operations and how the 911 telephone system operates within the county. As a part of their function and their responsibility under the revised code, they are to produce an annual report that has to go out to the municipalities and the townships within Jogga County, or anybody that's serviced by the Jogga County 911 PSAPs. So what they sent to us was actually a copy of their report, asking us, you as a body, for your support and your approval of their plan. I've looked at it. It's in line with what the statute requires under Chapter 128, and I told the committee that I'd be in favor of council voting to approve that plan.
Thank you, Chief.
Certainly, sir.
Well, I think at this point, then we should turn it over to Chief Geis.
Yeah, Justin, come on up.
Thanks for having us.
So we had a pretty busy 2023. I'd like to go over some of the improvements that have been made to the department over the last three years. The 1964 Jeep that was our brush vehicle was able to be replaced. It was time. It didn't, it liked to go, but it didn't like to stop. So it was, it was time to look at a little bit more updated model. We did have an addition of a third ambulance, which we have finally received. We did order that two years ago. It took us that long to get in just because of production delays and the way the market is right now. We've been able to add one full-time member to our duty crew. We've also made an addition of, in a sixth position during the day, that's from the hours of 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and that covers all three shifts. Chief Gaspar was able to secure a grant and replace all of our radio systems. Those radios were scheduled to be unserviceable and unreparable by 2025.
Five.
So that was a huge, that was 260-some thousand, I believe. Repaired and replaced all of our fire gear, replaced outdated hose and nozzles. We did recently receive another grant and were able to replace all of our power saws and power equipment. That was around $10,000. That came from a grant from the state. Modernized the Fire Prevention Bureau. If you aren't aware, we adopted a new software program that we're utilizing to streamline fire prevention, keep better records, utilizing portals for contractors to submit inspections and reports. Over the last three years, we've received over $354,000 in grants that has gone towards equipments, training, and various other items that, that we've, we've needed. So. Our current staffing levels are six personnel from 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM, and we have five personnel at night. We do have a minimum of four personnel that we will have there 24/7, 365. That includes three paramedics, at least three paramedics. The reason we set a minimum is if we do have a call off or something like that, we will actually pull somebody in on overtime to ensure that we have adequate staffing. So out of our, our personnel, we have two full-time members on A shift, three full-time members on B shift, and two full-time members on C shift. The rest of those positions are filled with part-time staff. Our four-year call volume in 2020, we had 1,872 calls in total, which was a COVID year, and it was kind of an anomaly. People actually didn't want to go to the hospital, so the numbers were unusually low. Jumping forward to 2023, we responded to 2,326 calls. 28 and 1/2% of the time, we're responding on more than one call at a time. That could be two, three, four, sometimes five calls at a time. So. The city's run totals from 2020 to 2023, 2020 was 1,077. 2023, we responded to 1,385 calls, the city alone. Over the four years, it's a 28 and 1/2% increase that we've seen in call volume. To kind of give you an idea on other departments in the area, what, what their run numbers are in staffing, Kirtland, for example, is just shy of 1,400 calls a year with a staffing of four to five. Bainbridge is a little over 2,200 calls with a staffing of four. Chester does about 1,500 with four to five, and then Concord does 3,000 with eight to nine. And I forgot to put Munson in here, but Munson's around 1,500 with five. So moving forward, 2025 through 2027, some of our goals, we would like to add an addition of two full-time members, giving us three full-time members per shift, increase staffing from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, from five members to six, increase wages to assist with employee retention and recruitment, and continue with replacement schedules that we have for vehicles, equipment, and modernization of some of our outdated equipment. And that was that. And as far as the contracting moving forward, our proposal for the next three-year contract, for those that aren't aware, the way that we, we rep, pardon me, we cover Chardon City, Chardon Township, half of Clarendon Township. We cover Chardon City, Chardon Township, half of Clarendon Township, and Aquila Village, all out of one station. So when we figure out a, um, a contract amount, there is a formula that Chief Gaspar and, um,
Jeff Schmok.
Jeff Schmok developed forever ago that, uh, take the exempt and non-exempt property values and then the total run values over a five-year average. They take that average and then average those out between the entities, and that is how they come up with the percentage of that contract amount that each entity is responsible for. Chardon City's contract percentage for this cycle is 54.55%. And we are proposing a 8% increase per year for three years over the three-year contract. This would allow us to increase the staffing that we need to and to get us up into a little bit better position. We do have a somewhat unique opportunity. The budget that we proposed to safety council actually shows the department going into a negative. The reason for that, we applied for and are knocking on every piece of wood we can find for a employee retention credit, was, which was some COVID money that was out there. In the event that money is received, we would be able to utilize those funds to spread, to make the increase in improvements in year one, rather than how we've traditionally done and spread it out over, you know, three to five years. We would utilize those funds so it's not a huge, uh, impact to the city or to the residents as far as the increased costs. That would allow us to make those improvements 2025, add the additional staffing, and, and get everybody rolling right out of the gate. So as far as the ladder truck is concerned, there's been quite a few meetings with that. We currently have a grant into the capital budget committee. It is in the Senate right now and still knocking on wood on that one. We've asked for 1.1 million dollars towards that vehicle. Vehicle's currently 21 years old. NFPA suggests that fire trucks be run second line after 15 years and be pulled out of service after 20. We do not have, they're not going to penalize us if we run it longer than that. The vehicle's currently passing all its testing, ladder testing, pump testing. But bottom line is it's going to be a 25-year-old vehicle in northeast Ohio salt, and it's, uh, time to consider replacing it. So the ISO rating that that truck helps the city achieve, we currently have an ISO rating of a three. In the event that vehicle did not exist any longer, our ISO rating would immediately, immediately jump one point to a four, which would mean anywhere from a five to a 15% increase in insurance va, insurance rates for homeowners and businesses. So we're exploring every option as far as funding, alternative funding for that, and going to see what we can do, and hopefully we get, get some help from the state on it. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Well, uh, Justin, I think we ought to talk briefly, um, about, um, comparing the, the hourly cost of, of your personnel versus some of the municipal fire departments in the area.
Okay.
And then I think the question came up in the meeting about the difference in training between your staff and the good old-fashioned volunteer fire.
Well, you know, unfortunately, the days of Mr. Rickard coming out and jumping on a truck when the fire bell goes off is, is, is long gone. I think we're, we're number one, far too busy for, uh, I don't think there's an employer that would allow their employee to leave five to six times a day and go on a call. Also, the training requirements and the certification requirements that have been placed on us have, have dramatically increased. We used to traditionally have a lot of part-time people that worked full-time day jobs and would come in and work for us on weekends and nights. That is even becoming increasingly difficult. I believe at this point, we only have, um, one part-time member that still works regularly that has a, a job outside of the fire and EMS service. The continuing education requirements and the, the, um, just the amount of hours that we have to put in to maintain our professional certifications. Our paramedics are tracked. And when I say tracked, tracked in a, in a good way for quality improvement, but as I explained to council, our, our heart monitors that we have on the, on the vehicles, they tie in with the, the compression machines that we have, that if we have to do CPR on someone, and we will get a report, um, when, when we have a run that we have to do that. And there's parameters we have to stay in, there's continuing education requirements that we have to have. So we, we need to make sure that, that our people are trained and that they're responding with the tools that they need and they're up to date on everything. So, and as far as the compensation levels, um, we, we are not a municipal department. We are still a private company. We are not able to offer a pension program to our employees. We try to become, be as competitive as possible. And the fire service as a whole has become incredibly competitive. The days of when I was testing for full-time, we would go and sit with probably 400 people, and that might just be to renew their list in case a full-time position opened. There wasn't even a full-time position. There's large cities that are now putting tests out, and they're getting 25, 35 people for six to seven positions opening up. So we need to ensure that we, we keep and attract the good people we have. Currently, comparable fire departments that I had pulled up were Kirtland, Bainbridge, Chester, and Concord. Kirtland's rate for a, and this is for a blue shirt fireman, paramedic, not for an officer. Kirtland's rate is 74, 443. Bainbridge is currently paying 89, 109. Chesterland is 71, 887, and Concord is 87, 377. So we're trying to get a, a little bit more competitive with our, with our compensation. Certainly not looking to become a Bainbridge or a Concord, but, but we'd like to be at least in the running, so.
Just for comparison, in your, in 2027, your, your typical, um, staff would be getting 77,000, 738.
Correct.
So this is three years from now, and that still puts them, you know, in sort of the middle range of, of compensation. And as he says, it's, I think we're getting a real bargain because it's not a municipal fire department. Uh, as far as our cost to the taxpayer, I think we're getting much bigger bang for the buck than the shared fire department for the structure right now.
And just for reference, over the past three years, um, Chief Gaspar and I have sat down and gone through the budget line by line and item by item and reviewed every contract down to, um, cell phone bills and have changed providers to, to save some money. We have been able to get the full-time base pay up 21,000 in those last three years, and we still need some improvements on that. Our base pay was, was significantly lower than, than where it should have been in today's market, so. And we were able to do that without an increase to the entities.
You said that, uh, Chardon's percentage is 54. What was it prior?
I don't know that I brought that with me. I might, I might, hold on a second, let me check my folder. I want to say it was, it actually went down a little bit, I believe.
Usually it's about 55, a little over 55% historically.
So it's kind of in the ballpark of worth.
Yeah, and these, these did include, I do not have that with me. It, it did go down a little bit. I think it was like a percent, maybe it wasn't significant. These did include 2023's reevaluation numbers. So there was, there was quite a dramatic increase across the board for all the entities and the property values, so.
One thing different about this contract too is Justin recommended that we roll in the contract we have for the fire prevention officer. That'll be part of the three-year contract rather than two separate ones when it does come for council's approval. Uh, additionally, I wanted to say that the finance director has been looking at different scenarios now that we know what the contracts will look like, assuming council passes it, and we know the ladder truck's coming. Scenarios as far as what the levy will be, and we'll take those numbers and those scenarios to the safety committee the next meeting and say, here's where we think we need to go and make some recommendations.
Fire prevention has historically been a separate contact, contract with the city. The contract price did not cover the entire cost that it cost the department to provide fire prevention services. And we provided those services very minimally in Chardon Township, but now Clarendon Township has seen some, some development down in the Ravenwood and Merritt Road corridor. By including the fire prevention in our, in our overall budget, rather than having that as a, as a separate item, that now, that, that line item then becomes subject to the, the division of the, percentage division of the, to the entities.
So it's the safety committee's recommendation that, um, that your contract increase be incorporated in the, in the next, in the new contract. And that, Justin, I don't know if you have the chance to do it yet, but we'd like the law department to review it, and hopefully we can, we can have it on the agenda for the May meeting for approval. Is that, law director? We can do that.
Yep.
Andy, when, when does council have to approve the one on the ballot?
So the, to get it on the, we have to have it approved before August to get it on the, on the November ballot. So, you know, at that, we're going to be discussing the, um, Mark will be coming up with the numbers at this next meeting of the, of the service committee, of the, excuse me, the safety committee. And hopefully we can finalize that and bring it back to council in May and either get it on the May agenda or the June agenda, um, for approval so that we can get it on the, on the, get a levy on the ballot uh, in, in November. And it will take some education of the public to let them know what, what it is and why it is. It's going to be, it's going to be an increase in the levy amount from what it is now because of, as we just discussed, our increased personnel costs, uh, the cost of equipment is going up. So, uh, all those things need to be covered by the, by the fire line. Debbie, do you have anything you want to add?
No, everything sounds right.
The additional money needed for the ladder truck then part of that same?
It would be, it would be putting money aside for the eventual purpose, eventual purchase of the ladder truck in three or four years. It takes, as Chief said, this thing is worn out. It takes time to order it. It takes three years to build one?
If we ordered it today, we wouldn't see it for three years. Currently, we have a little flexibility with, with that vehicle. There's no drop-dead date that it has to be replaced by. And when I sat with the, the manager, he kind of asked me that too, and I said, well, I said, ultimately, we need to consider that we have a little flexibility with it, but when you're dealing with a, you know, 25-year-old piece of equipment, it, it might not pass that testing the next year, and then you're putting a bunch of money into it to fix it, or it may not be repairable. At, at this point, the, the maintenance program that our, our, our maintenance gentleman has done on it, the vehicle's in very, very good shape for its age. It's just time to start looking at where those funds are coming from and, and getting an idea. Is it, are we going to have to order in 2027? Are we going to have to hold off till 2029? That's, that's the, the numbers we got to get figured out, so.
Just one more point of clarification. The ladder truck is the only piece of equipment that the city owns?
Correct.
Correct. So when we're talking about levy measure then, that is also impacted by Chardon Township and Aquila and Clarendon, part of Clarendon? How is that going to be positioned?
So we've had some discussions with the manager and he has, unless, would you like to field this one?
Uh, what was the question?
Did you see me pass, pass that buck over there?
The other question is, are we going to own it in the end?
Well, I'm more concerned about how we're going to get it paid for to start, but.
We're operating on the assumption still that it is 100% city's responsibility. Whether we get the grant money in or not, we know that we're going to have to fund it. We want to have continued dialogue with the fire department and the other entities to say, you know, we need to transition this piece of apparatus over to the fire department as all the rest of the equipment is. And how do we do that? Even if at the end of the day, 50% comes back to the city, or we don't have to pay the final 50%, but those conversations haven't been held yet. So now we know we need a new one. We know we'd like to continue the dialogue with not having it be the only, the, the responsibility of the city of Chardon, and go from there. Did that answer your question, Mayor?
Yes, thank you.
Couldn't have said it better myself.
This didn't come up in the meeting, but is, um, is there a resale value on a used ladder truck? There's got to be other departments that are hard up, would be, would welcome a nicely, you know, a piece of equipment that would well may be, even though it's 30 years old.
Very minimal. Mark, I don't know that you, did you find anything when you looked? Mark, and I talked on the phone the other day, and I actually pulled up GovDeals, and, uh, I, I want to say the one that was on there, which was really not that close to ours, but was going for 60 some thousand?
I did not have a chance to look. I know we had the discussion, so I've not, but that is on the table.
For a, for a, I believe that vehicle was 750 when it was purchased. Even, most used fire apparatus, whether that be an ambulance or a fire truck, the resale value on those is nowhere near what the purchase price was.
And just so people know, the, the advantage of having the ladder truck, and you may have touched on it, is that it does make a big difference in insurance rates, especially for commercial and industrial entities within the city. Just something that, you know, something to consider. Reduces the cost of operations for, uh, those, those commercial and industrial entities in the city, as well as our own personal, um, homeowner's insurance goes down a bit as well because of, because it's at ISO rating of one?
No, we, we currently have an ISO rating of three, and it would increase by one, at, at least one if that vehicle didn't exist, so.
Is there any, like, do you have a sense, are there any other grant opportunities? Are you allowed to put more than one grant money towards it if we can find it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and anything that comes up, we're throwing our hat in the ring for. So we're also exploring some other options. We, Chief and I met yesterday with a, um, new billing company that handles our, would be, well, doesn't handle it, but, um, is trying to handle our EMS billing. There are some cost recovery options that we, we learned about where we can potentially bill to, um, if we go on a, a car accident or a hazmat incident or something like that. And those bills get billed to the at-fault parties' insurance company, so it wouldn't be an additional expense to the residents. And that money is supposed to be used for, for vehicle and equipment replacement. So, um, we don't really have a handle on how much that could potentially be yet annually. It would probably take a year or so to, to get a good idea as far as what that's going to be, but it, it could be a, a decent chunk of change to kind of offset some of the, the replacement costs. The, the vehicle costs, as everybody knows, were, whether it's a, a passenger car or a ladder truck, I think if we all had a crystal ball prior to COVID and we were able to see what, what vehicle costs we're going to do, we'd probably all be sitting on a beach somewhere, but the, um, for instance, our, our ambulance that we just received, our old ambulance was a 2019, I'm going to say that was 220, 239,000. The new ambulance that we just received came in at 326, and it took us two years to get. It's not gold-plated. It just, the, the vehicle costs have been astronomical. The ladder truck, um, you're looking at, at, at 2.2 million in the event we order it in 2027. Not real sure where it would go from there. So, um, unfortunately, they've kind of got you where they want you, and if you want it, you got to pay it. So like I say, we, we really want to try and do everything that we can to try and offset the. those costs to the taxpayers, so.
Okay. Any other questions for either of our chiefs? We appreciate all the hard work you guys put in, and thank you for the information.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the Service Committee report. Kyle?
Thank you, Mayor. The Service Committee met on Thursday, April 4th. Some of the old business was discussed, was what to do with the Shepherd staffs. They're removed from the cemetery. Service Committee will discuss this at the first meeting after Memorial Day. Under New Business, we discussed the 2024 Street Maintenance Program scope, as well as all the CIP and miscellaneous projects for 2024 and 2025, which, under both of those, Manager Sharp had mentioned throughout his manager reports, so.
Okay, are there any other questions for Kyle or Dave on Service? Great, thank you. We'll move on to Parks and Rec Board. Debbie?
Kyle's got this one.
Kyle's got this one.
I've got this one as well. Yes, the Park and Recreation Board met on Tuesday, March 26th. Under Facilities, they are being prepped for the season ahead. Lands and Buildings has taken over maintenance of the Highlands Trail within the city. Speaking of the Highlands Trail, the interpretive signs are nearly complete and will be installed by the Street Department this spring. As far as programs are concerned, their Park and Rec will, Recreation will no longer have any programming at 106 due to the Willoughby Fine Arts Association occupying that space. As far as other programs, Use Softball has 10 teams. The Giaga Soccer Federation has renewed their contract with the city again this year. Summer registration opened on March 1st and is going very well with an uptick in program registrations, so that's good news. Under Miscellaneous, there are still several Park and Rec maintenance positions to fill. There's currently enough, the good news is there's currently enough staff for the pool and day camp, but we're still looking for assistant camp director, so if anybody knows anybody. Under New Business, we still need one member from the community on the board, as well as one member recommended by the Chardon School Board for the school liaison for Park and Rec. And finally, the Board discussed how to approach partnering with for-profit and nonprofit entities for new programs. It was recommended a high-level standards document be created and shared with the interested parties as one of the first steps in approaching these partnerships. Concludes my report.
Sorry, what was that put together?
It was discussed on putting together some kind of document that is one of the first steps of saying, hey, you are interested in partnering with the city. This is kind of like, not the terms, but just setting expectations upfront of what you can expect when you're exploring these partnerships. So there's no questions of...
The issue of the school, Chardon Public Schools making a recommendation of additional member?
Yes, so there's two openings. One, just a member of the community, and another, according to Mr. Rogers, said that it needs to be just somebody that the school board recommends to be on the board.
And are they aware of that request? You have a school board member here shaking his head no, so I guess we need to at least get that.
This is not new. This is a basic, see, of an existing position.
Yes.
Always been a school board appointee.
Okay.
So this is nothing different.
No, I think it just gets lost in the, throughout time, so my intention was to attend a school board meeting to bring that up.
Okay.
Since I'm very close to the school board.
If I remember right, that originally came about due to the way properties were handled way back in the day, when it was school property and the city was using school property. And we even got to the point where if the city made an improvement on a piece of property that was the schools, it became the cities. So you actually had like grills for cooking, improvement. Technically, I guess if I remember right, it was technically our property right under that grill, but it was in school property. It's kind of a strange situation, but anyway. That's kind of why we got to a sharing type thing, wanted everybody's voice at the table.
Very good. Are there any other questions for Parks and Rec Board? Okay, thank you, Kyle. Move on now to Agenda Item 8, Hearing of Persons Before Council. We have Don Rice, the Superintendent of Giaga County Board of Developmental Disabilities here tonight. Welcome, Don.
Thank you for having me. Every year, we try to get out, let people know what we're doing, let them ask questions, get to know if they have any questions. They're welcome to call me. I will say, I handed out those folders. At the bottom, there's a phone number. If you call and you need something, ask for Don, that number. I'm the only Don that works there, so they'll get you right in with me, and we can get whatever moving and taken care of. Last year, we served 1,188 people. You should have gotten a postcard in the mail just recently showing you some of the things comparing 20 years ago versus what last year was like. We've more than doubled the number of people we're serving. In almost every category, as you look through, you'll see that who we're serving has gone up. And we've been able to do that over time, but not in the same way. We've had to change who we are and how we serve people. Back then, we had 320 employees, and we provided most of the day programming, the schools and things like that. Today, we have less than 60 employees, right around 60 employees, and we're using outside contractors in many cases to provide most of the services. We've gone from the point where we were funding most of it to the point where now we're using Medicaid funding whenever possible. And so you'll see that, at that postcard, we're using a lot of federal funding whenever we can to avoid having the taxpayer pay most of it. We still provide the same programs. Our youngest person is newborn. Our oldest person's 94. We provide the services that those clients need. A 94-year-old doesn't have family at home, so we're providing 24/7 care. We have around 200 people that we're providing 24/7 care for. It's the most expensive thing we do, also probably one of the most important things we do, simply because there isn't family to care for them. On the other end of the scale, if you know somebody who's a mother-to-be, has a child who's been diagnosed or in utero, or even born in something seeming to be not quite right, have them give us a call. We have speech therapists, OTs, PTs, developmental specialists. We'll happily come out to the home, talk to the family, see if there's something that needs to be done, what we can do to help out. It's a trying time for a family when they realize that maybe their child has a disability. And a lot of times, having somebody to talk to, a lot of times will hook them up with other families who might have that same, that child with the same type of disability. It helps them deal with the situation, and that's really what we'd like to do. Thankfully, about half the people we serve who were in that zero-to-three population have the issue dealt with, and they are typically functioning by the time they reach school age, and then we don't have to see them again. We'd love that it happened to all of our folks. That isn't always possible. You know, we have people who will be ours for the rest of their lives, and that's okay. We'll provide those services where they need to be. I'll leave with one thing that we're most proud of. In 2012, we had 35 people working in the community. Today, well, it says 186 on that postcard. It's actually 189 was the most recent number that I've seen. We've switched how we do things. And instead of taking people to a workshop where they made friends in the workshop and didn't want to leave, we now make them come directly out of school and find jobs, and we help them find jobs, and then they make friends at their jobs, just like we would. And so they like to be out in the working world, and it's worked well. We're really proud of that. Do you have any questions?
Any questions for Don?
I will leave with one last thing. We want to say thank you for the public, for their support. 80% of the funds that we have are local levy dollars. Without them, there is no services. We can't match the federal dollars. We can't do many of the services that are there. Without the support of the local community, there is no Board of DD. So I want to say thank you, and I want to, and make sure that that's expressed, that without your support, we couldn't do what we do.
Understood. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Hearing of the General Public. If you do wish to address Council, you can come up here and identify yourself by your full name, where you live, and you'll have two minutes to discuss whatever you wish. Going once. Okay, we'll move on to Old Business. We don't have any Old Business. Moving on to New Business. New Business A is consideration of the individual state championship signs. This topic first came up last fall, somewhere around there. And we would like to pursue, as most of us know, many years ago, there used to be signage around the Chardon area that gave credit to the individuals from Chardon High School who had achieved individual state championship. And then those signs have been taken down over the years, and we decided after a few individuals in the area have requested new signs, we put up. So then we put our feelers out to the Chardon local schools and got the complete listing of the current individual state champions from the high school. And Randy and staff have been working on the development of how those signs would appear and the costs associated with them. And Council, everybody has in their packet the recommendation for how the signs would appear. There is a map that is color-coded to reference where the current state team champ signs are located around Chardon. And also, we're recommending the four individual state championship signs be erected. There's a few things to discuss there, but then we also have a cost structure in our packet for the four signs, and there are some photos printed out as to the recommendation of where we want to put these in the ground. So the first issue might be to review where we're recommending the signs be placed, and if everyone would draw their attention to the City of Chardon map. I can say for, if you notice, you have a 1, 2, 3, 4, and 4B. Is everyone seeing that on the map? Okay, so I'm strongly behind 1, 2, and 3, 3 being Mel Harder Field. 4A and 4B are on property that's close to the middle school and/or high school. One of those properties is currently, one of those locations is on city property, the other is on school property, correct, Randy?
Correct.
And is it 4A, or I think 4B is on, 4B is the one closest to, like, for example, the pool?
That'd be school property.
That'd be school property.
Is that a sign there?
And then 4A.
Is on North Street.
But I'll, those are the recommendations that we're currently looking at. I'd like to hear from Council if they have any objections to, to start with 1, 2, and 3. I know Debbie has told me that she's not, Debbie, you can express that, the Mel Harder one. The, these sides, these signs are one-sided, so the sign recommended at Mel Harder is on Chardon Windsor Road, and it would face the street, but it would be close to the entrance to Mel Harder to give visibility to the people traveling on that route, and also the hundreds if not thousands of people that visit Mel Harder during the course of a year, so. And we also thought that that might be a good location to do a, an unveiling of the signage that's, we're predicting would be in July of this year.
So that sign would be parallel, is what you're saying?
For the most part, I think, I think they have a kind of a...
Turning to the picture.
Yeah.
I'm so proud of my alma mater. I think these signs are awesome. However, I think that the four at the streets, main streets coming into Chardon, like, two on 6 and two on 44, coming and going, would be ideal. I'm not so in favor of the ones by the school and by the Board of Education. They just seem like out of context to what, where we've had the team championships. And now the, yes, I talked to the mayor about the one at Mel Harder. I get his reasoning behind doing an unveiling, so I'm, I'm okay with that either way, you know? I'll go with the flow on that.
So do we have consensus, at least for discussion, that 1, 2, and 3 would be appropriate, but you maybe look at the one near the school and find a new location for that?
Yes.
Okay, that's completely fine. I have, and then the recommendation might be, you're thinking out on 6 coming into, from Hamden?
From, down by the service garage?
Right.
Where the one is?
There's also 44 coming in town, in the south.
The only thing, it's because they're going to be small, they're going to be harder to read if people are, you know, one of the things is like, they're, we want people to be able to go slow enough to be able to see them, right? So they're not like the bigger signs, so maybe if we have a couple that are, where people can walk to, can like walk up to them and look at them versus, and then a couple that people will be driving by.
Well, I think that's the perfect rationale for the Mel Harder location, for one of them, because you can't get out hard. And as far as the sign size, maybe Paul, you can help. Steve?
I don't think the pictures are quite an accurate representation of how big they are, because based on the spec, it's a seven-foot tall sign.
Yeah.
I mean, that's taller than, I mean, that's, that's basically, that's pretty much the same height as the one we have.
These, the lettering on these are bigger than the team sign.
I think the panels are about the same. I think there might be more. Either way, this, this, this sign structure is going to be a, even if, even if the bottom sign is flush to the ground, it's going to be seven feet tall. So, so the pictures that are in these, these aren't necessarily depicted as seven-foot tall signs.
I don't think the current long plaques for the state team champs are 24 inches wide, and these are 24 by 12. Oh, so it would be 24 the other way, so they'd be 12 inches wide, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe about the same.
About the same?
Mm-hmm.
I just had a question. Are these signs going to be tall enough to have another row?
Yes. One more row. We have room for one and then three more until it would be totally full. We can actually install it so it's a little lower, and then change the bracketing to raise it up when that happens. It took 50 years to get to where we are, but who knows, right?
And just 4B, I did just receive a call from the school today, and I believe they're going to go to planning commission in the next, I think in probably May. They're going to replace that sign, and I believe they're moving it down to the driveway.
Replace what sign?
The, the sign that's at the corner by the practice field.
Their, their current sign?
Yeah, their current sign in the corner. Yeah, Maple and Chardon Avenue. I believe that's being replaced by an electronic message board that they want to move, and they're moving it down by the driveway that goes into the high school. Up Maple Avenue.
The one that's labeled 4B and has the school sign with the brick on it? That's the brick sign you're talking about?
See if we have the team and the individual on either side of that, that's fine.
It's busy.
It's being more...
Busy.
Be a big sign.
I personally think it would look, if they were going to put, if they're going to put a sign there, I would think you'd want to put the team sign on one side, and there's a sign on the other, instead of just one. Personal opinion, just curious thoughts.
So then do we add the team sign down to Mel Harder, so that we have both? Individual and team?
We already have the team sign by Mel Harder.
Do?
Yes.
On the other side of the street.
Inbound traffic.
Right. It should be listed on there.
Yeah. The team sign is down there on Chardon Windsor, near Mel Harder.
Oh, so it's when you come in, though, to town, that you see it?
Yeah.
So move that over to Mel Harder?
I don't know.
If we do the individual?
My thought was to cover the major routes coming in, which would be 44 coming in from the north, Route 6 coming in from the west, Route 6 coming in from the east, and 44 coming in from the south.
I would agree with Dan. I think we can forego the signs on the school, near the school, and move the fourth one down to 6 coming into Chardon from Hamden. I have no problem with that whatsoever.
I guess, would we need a, I think we'll end up, if we're still putting one by Mel Harder, having a fifth sign, right?
The Mel Harder one stays consistent.
1, 2, 3. But if we do Route 6 coming in from the east, we would have a, that would add a, in essence, a fifth sign.
No.
But you got 44 south.
44 in the south?
We didn't have anything on 44 south.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, if we had one at every route plus Mel Harder, that would be five total. I don't know what that adds to the.
Well, we could, we don't have that pricing for another one today.
Yeah, but.
Figure another $1,200, $1,300. Put it in perspective, we spent $2,500 on the 8 that we did for the state champs.
There's more pieces to this.
There's much more, many more pieces.
About to say.
And it's also four years later.
Yeah.
That's why it's so much more for 4 than it was for the 8.
But there's a lot of catch-up here, obviously.
So, I'm sorry, did we come to conclusions?
No. We are, we're pretty confident that 1, 2, and 3, meaning help Mel Harder, the fourth one, we're moving over to Route 6 coming in from Hamden. That's the fourth currently.
So in the same vicinity as the.
And then a fifth one, we want to put one down on 44 coming into Chardon, then that would be the additional cost of approximately $1,200 to $1,500 bucks for an additional sign.
I like, I like that idea. So go with the 5.
Oh, 5.
And then the ones be on the same side as the current team signs on 44, coming into town, and on 6, coming into town from the east.
Correct.
So here. Got it.
Okay.
Can I make a comment? If you could switch Nick Aldrich with Rachel Banks consecutively 2014 and 2015.
Go.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's good catch, Deb. Thanks.
Yep.
Good get.
And then we're also delaying this a little bit for printing, only because Carl Dietz, who was the junior last year who won the state championship, is a senior this year. And there's a good chance he could repeat. So before we print with his 2023, it might be a 2023, 2024, and we'll, we'll know here within a month.
Just to be clear, if the, if the person has multiple years of the same event, we're just going to one side of the person. Multiple years on the sign?
Yeah, so Leroy Kemp.
Lee and Mike Davies both fit into that category.
But Rachel Banks, she's both in the 800 meter, both years? That's what I heard that. Yeah. Oh, I see.
I don't think Rachel was.
I understand.
State champion for two different years.
I, Mr. Loco has explained it. I err my ways.
It's like crossing the mill. Is that what you pronounced? There's two different sports there, so that's why I interrupted.
Is it Leon and Nicky Mill?
Any of them?
Two separate.
Oh.
Cross-country, intrac.
Yeah, those are two separate.
Too hard to squeeze on. And it's two separate years, so.
And then we had Mark Better and Juanita Vatter, brother and sister, and Mike Davies and Michelle Davies.
And there are quite a few relatives of these folks all around. I know Mark and Juanita still live in the area, and Mike Davies has relatives, I'm sure Michelle does too. The interleads are still around, Dan Anderson's still here, Rosick's are around, Ben Robinson. So there's, there's quite a few people that. And Leroy Kemp, I have indicated that when we get ready for all this to be introduced to the community, that he'll make every effort he can to travel here from California and participate.
Do we need to take a motion on this?
Yes, I think we should take a motion. Debbie, you have something?
Well, just unless we get to discussion, but this is on, all coming out of the city offer?
Yes.
Nothing from the school or no donations or, okay.
What did we decide about the 2, 4A and B?
Not going.
You're gone.
Okay.
Then we'll entertain a motion to accept the individual state championship signs, the locations as discussed, and the additional cost outside of what is being presented on this quote.
So moved.
Second. Moving to second, it further discussion? Please call the question.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone. Moving on to legislation A. Did anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance amending Part 11 of the codified ordinances to adopt a new planning and zoning code.
That was the second reading of that. Move on to legislation B. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance amending the city zoning map by rezoning certain parcels of real property.
Second reading of that. Moving on to legislation C. Anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance enacting the December 2023 replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of Chardon and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second.
Move to second at discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3268. An ordinance enacting the December 2023 replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of Chardon and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3268. An ordinance enacting the December 2023 replacement pages to the codified ordinances of the city of Chardon and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3268?
So moved.
Second.
Moving to second at discussion? Amy?
Yes, this ordinance is to accept the supplements to the city's codified ordinances that reflect the ordinances council passed over the last year, as well, actually, over the last six months, as well as changes to the state's traffic laws and criminal code. And so by adopting the ordinance, council's authorizing that the replacement pages be accepted and kept as reference to the state code and the city's current codified ordinances.
Does this get them on the website?
It does, yes. Yep. So the, we actually have the pages, so if anybody has a book and they would like their pages updated, I can do that. And then within the next week, they'll be on our website. Any, so any ordinances that we passed through December of last year.
Just put my copies in my mailbox, I'll do it.
Okay.
Are there any other questions for Amy? Call the question.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Moving on to legislation D. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance authorizing participation in ODOT cooperative purchasing program and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
Second.
Move to second at further discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3269. An ordinance authorizing participation in ODOT cooperative purchasing program and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3269. An ordinance authorizing participation in ODOT cooperative purchasing program and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3269?
Second.
Moving to second at discussion? Paul? Ben?
This is the standard agreement we pass every year so that we may purchase certain things from the state like salt.
Anything else?
Negative.
Are there any questions for Ben? Not call the question?
It also authorizes to participate in the note, in the state bid contracts for purchases of vehicles. Is that not right?
Correct.
Thank you, Andy. Any other comments or questions? Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3270. An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a municipal prosecution services agreement with the office of the Geogga County Prosecuting Attorney and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second. Moving to second at discussion? Call the question.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
All right, moving on to legislation G.
Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance extending a moratorium on accepting applications for issuing zoning certificates for any building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable the cultivation, processing, distribution, or sale of adult-use cannabis, cannabis, or marijuana for a period not to exceed six months or until any legislation governing the same is enacted, in order to allow the city to review applicable state and local laws and to plan for regulations relating to such uses, and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
So moved.
Second. Moving to second at discussion? Call the question.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Motion carries number and read it, please.
Ordinance number 3269. An ordinance authorizing participation in ODOT cooperative purchasing program and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3269. An ordinance authorizing participation in ODOT cooperative purchasing program and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3269?
Second.
Moving to second at discussion? Paul? Ben?
This is the standard agreement we pass every year so that we may purchase certain things from the state like salt.
Anything else?
Negative.
Are there any questions for Ben? Not call the question?
It also authorizes to participate in the note, in the state bid contracts for purchases of vehicles. Is that not right?
Correct.
Thank you, Andy. Any other comments or questions? Call the question.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to legislation F. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance enacting a new Chapter 751 recreational marijuana on the codi, of the codified ordinances concerning the sale of recreational marijuana and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
Second.
Moving to second at discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on to legislation F. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance enacting a new Chapter 751 recreational marijuana on the codi, of the codified ordinances concerning the sale of recreational marijuana and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
Second.
Moving to second at discussion? Call the question.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Maluski?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
An ordinance enacting a new Chapter 751 recreational marijuana of the codified ordinances concerning the sale of recreational marijuana and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 3271. An ordinance enacting a new Chapter 751 recreational marijuana of the codified ordinances concerning the sale of recreational marijuana and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion for the adoption of ordinance number 3271?
No move.
Second.
Move in a second at discussion? Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. So council has before it an ordinance which will enact a new Chapter 751 of the codified ordinances. The purpose of this ordinance will be to prohibit the cultivation, processing, and dispensing of adult-use cannabis in the city. That's it? Plain and simple.
Well, we voted on the moratorium back in.
December.
December.
Correct.
Reached out to different individuals, had tremendous input from community members near and far, and the reason that we have this tonight is that this is what we feel is the right direction to move forward on. And you mentioned the sale, but also cultivation is part of.
Correct. Cultivation, processing, and dispensing are statutory terms.
So if this passes, then we are prohibiting medical marijuana and recreational marijuana.
You already prohibit medical marijuana, so that's in Chapter 749 of your code. So this is a complimentary chapter. If somebody, anybody looks, they'll look, they'll see your medical marijuana in 749, and then this in 751.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Please call the question.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
All right, moving on to legislation G. Would anyone like this ordinance read in its entirety? Hearing none?
An ordinance extending a moratorium on accepting applications for issuing zoning certificates for any building, structure, use, or change of use that would enable the cultivation, processing, distribution, or sale of adult-use cannabis, cannabis, or marijuana for a period not to exceed six months or until any legislation governing the same is enacted, in order to allow the city to review applicable state and local laws and to plan for regulations relating to such uses and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to read this by title only for the second and third time?
No move.
Move in a second at discussion? Call the question.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Molesky?
Yes.
Mr. Blackley?
Yes.
Mrs. Chuha?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.
Mr. Loco?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Grau?
Yes.